Please rise. Mayor Potem Schrader will lead us this evening in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any other discussion? Councillor Martínez?
Aye.
Councillor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councillor Martinez?
Aye.
Councillor Schrader?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
A quorum is declared. Thank you. All right. We do have a couple modifications to our agenda this evening. We have the swearing in of a new police officer. And we also, under proclamation, communications and appointments. And under citizens' comments and special presentations, we have the Montevista High School Student Council here with their proclamation for homecoming. So, do we have a motion to approve the modified agenda?
I make a motion to approve the modified agenda.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Councillor Martinez?
Aye.
Councillor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councillor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councillor Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries? So, do we also have a motion to approve the minutes from September 7th and 21st and the accounts payable?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry? Just jump into the gun. Any other discussion? Nita?
Councillor Martinez?
Aye.
Councillor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councillor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councillor Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to proclamations, communications and appointments. We have the swearing in of police officer Patrick. Please pronounce that for me.
Luzak?
Luzak.
Luzak.
Yes. Come on up.
Hi, Patrick Luzak.
Hi, Patrick Luzak.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Montevista.
Of the city of Montevista.
And the county of Rio Grande.
And the county of Rio Grande.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
A police officer.
A police officer.
For the city of Montevista.
For the city of Montevista.
And the county of Rio Grande.
And the county of Rio Grande.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And upon which I am about to enter.
And upon which I am about to enter.
Outstanding. Welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
If you'd like to come up.
Congratulations. If you'd like to stay there for just one second, we'd like to get a photo. And any of the officers that came this evening in support would like to join as well? Welcome. Thank you. Welcome. Okay. Moving on to citizens' comments and special presentations. We have a request from the Montevista Historical Society for financial assistance on an awning. Is there anyone here this evening? I'm not sure if you have the chance, Nita, to visit with them, but I would like to see a bid for the awning, to know what the request is even for.
Okay. I did talk to Paige today and I thought she was going to be here, so... But I will send that request in.
So, yeah, maybe if you'd also just let her know, we're going to just move this to the next meeting and they can maybe provide us a little more information on costs and also if we could maybe have in our packet for the next meeting what is left in our budget to even donate. Moving on to Valley III Theater Board. In your packet you have a request from Frank Hudson to serve on the Valley III Theater Board.
And, Madam Mayor, Mr. Hudson did call me today and he said that he was not going to be able to attend, so, but he just wanted me to pass along that he would love the opportunity to serve.
Which is a council?
Do we have a requirement for the theater board to be a resident or... Or is it just URA?
The planning commission and the URA are required to be residents, theater board. I don't believe we've legislated that way, so... Somebody wants to be on. I move to appoint Frank Hudson to the Valley III Theater Advisory Board.
Second. Any other discussion? Nita?
Councillor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councillor Martinez?
Aye.
Councillor Schrader?
Aye.
Councillor Schlebach?
Aye.
And Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a utility disconnect request from Mr. Tommy Cantor. Do you want to just come up to the podium?
Yeah. It's an old trailer. It's a 1979. And I recently just redid the house that's on the property and moved my kids into there, so I want to abandon, you know, get it off of there and get it turned back into decent looking area and everything. But they said that they couldn't have a permanent disconnect with a structure on there. But the thing is, it just takes time and money to get that. It's a trailer, you know, I have to dismantle it and get it off of there and all of that. And meanwhile, I have to keep paying water bills that aren't being used. It's a minimum, you know, and it still adds up. So I was just wanting to get it done. I've already got the paperwork and all that done with Excel and it's taken them, they said, three to four weeks for the permanent disconnect and all the power and everything out of there and the gas and that. So it'll be turned into a cleaned up, decent property again because we have enough bad stuff around. Said I had to come and ask you people if I could get it disconnected, so...
What is the procedure to evaluate that? I mean, do we, are we required to have a hearing? Yes, you are. I was, no hearing scheduled tonight to my knowledge.
We only have an application to get on the citizens' comments section. That's the only application we have, so this is the first step for Mr. Cantor is to get in front of you, let you know you as councilman can direct staff to set up an actual formal hearing and go from there and actually make a decision.
And is there any, does it need to be, like, posted anywhere or... Yeah. And how long is that?
Three days.
Three days? Okay. So we can have a hearing at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cantor, so we will have you on our next agenda for an actual public hearing rather than just a citizen's comment. So will we post it three days to let the public know and then if anybody wants to come in and say anything, we'll move into a hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda this evening is Ms. Azrael to discuss DCI and her proposal.
Hello, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. So, DCI is an organization, membership organization that we've been a part of for roughly a year and a half. And they provide a lot of community development in business and just general economic development assistance and programs. Recently, they were successful in an application to a USDA rural development plan, sorry, grant to aid rural areas in business development. And what the proposal that you see in your packet, this one, is a proposal to come to the city of Montevista and host a business development institute. This business development institute would have three different seminars. Small Business Driving in an Amazon World, kind of coaching businesses on how to compete with online retailers. Design Principles for Merchandising and Displays, kind of like hands-on, sorry, how to set up your store or incentives tips. And these are big professionals that they will be bringing. And the third one is telling your story, kind of like how do you tell a story on your business, whether it's online or marketing, in marketing materials. This business institute in total costs roughly $5,000 because of the USDA Rural Development Grant covering those costs. That brings the cost of the city of Montevista to host to $1,000. So that is my request tonight. This business institute would be theoretically held November 12th. November 12th, and it will be roughly four hours with the only other associated cost would be the cost of having a coffee break. So, yes.
So, don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead.
November 12th is a Sunday.
November, it was a Wednesday date. Sorry, it was, then it must be the 15th.
Fifteenth.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. It does say 15th on my paper.
Okay. I would actually be okay with a Sunday, but I think some people may not.
No. My apologies. It is Wednesday, November 15th, and the time that we've kind of agreed upon, if you approve, would be 4:00 PM.
4:00 what?
8:00 PM. So we do four hours. And it would also be, another thing that we would add to the kind of agenda of that evening would be another mini work session on our Economic Development Assistance Policy and kind of just bringing up that we also have this assistance available to the city. And so it should be a really great event. Carr, Carril and DCI are very well known throughout the state, have helped many business development efforts and Main Street programs. So I guess, are there any questions?
Whose budget is this coming out of?
Well, that's a good question, Madam Mayor Potem. The city council has two areas in its budget where that money might be available. That would be professional services, we currently have $1,200 in sunny cupboard, and/or travel in schools where you have about $2,000 that is not spoken for.
Yes, it is.
We made the motion to use it for the city.
Well, you have a $5,000 line item there.
Pardon?
The budget that you all had for travel in schools is $5,000.
$5,000, okay.
Right. So conservatively, you have about $2,000 there that you could spend if you'd like to outside of that.
There's certainly think it would be under professional development and...
And I think it would be hopefully money well spent.
May I add a couple things?
Sure.
I'm sorry. As part of this, Montevista businesses, 20 businesses would get free admission to the business institute. And we would open it up to surrounding businesses from Delmore, South Fork, Aralmosa, kind of strengthening those regional partnerships. And those businesses would pay a $30 charge to get in. But Montevista businesses, 20 would get in for free. And if there's any additional, like, interest beyond that, then we can definitely accommodate Monti businesses to have this free of cost to them.
Which is a council?
I make a motion to approve Azrael's request.
And...
For a $1,000...
Well, that goes without saying. Sorry. Allow her to have $1,000 from our budget to put this on.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Councillor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councillor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councillor Martinez?
Aye.
Councillor Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it, and I hope to see all five of you there.
I'll be there. Thank you. Moving on to our next item, we have the Montevista High School here to read their homecoming proclamation and tell us about homecoming.
So, hello, everyone. My name is Robert Grant. I'm a senior this year, and I am the Montevista High School Student Body/Student Council President. And I am here to present the 2017 Homecoming Proclamation. So, whereas October 23rd through the October 28th is Montevista's Homecoming Week, whereas this year's homecoming theme is Harry Potter, Montevista's Wizarding World. Whereas the Montevista High School is a large segment of the Montevista community, whereas the Montevista High School views Homecoming Week as a week that is filled with community enthusiasm. Whereas the Montevista High School wishes great community participation in the 2017 Homecoming as we celebrate 2017 and our connections within our community. Whereas the community supports Montevista High School in many ways all year. Be it proclaimed that October 23rd through October 28th of the year 2017 be designated and celebrated as Harry Potter, Montevista's Wizarding World. And we wanted to add about the bonfire. So if we can have the bonfire at Sky High Park like we did last year, it'll be...
Slightly later than you originally planned?
Yep. On Thursday night, so it'll be following right after our volleyball game. So it'll be around 7:30-ish, so...
Glad you brought that up. We actually, we had talked with the school board about that, and we're more than happy to host that as well and we're getting all the logistics.
We're working on a sound system for you guys as well this year.
Appreciate that. Yeah. We're working on that too, so appreciate that.
Okay. If there's anything else that you need from us? Okay. So who would we stay in touch with in terms of if you're getting a sound system?
You can always call Forrest here at City Hall, but Matthew Martinez and myself, we're on the Joint School-City Committee, and we meet monthly. So actually, we'll be meeting next Tuesday, next Tuesday morning. So you're always welcome to reach out to Mr. Webb, and they can bring anything up at that meeting as well.
Wonderful. Great.
If we can get this signed.
And the two of you can sign? There you go. Thank you. Can we get a picture that we can send to the paper?
Yeah, we can get a picture, definitely.
Oh, we have the presses here too, so...
Yeah, okay. Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. Of course.
You could get in the...
So you're taking them. I'll put them in the end. Yeah.
And I'm sure somebody would be happy to take a picture.
Thank you.
Well, we hope the week goes well.
Thank you very much.
Again, if there's anything, just let us know.
Okay.
Our next agenda item this evening is Resolution Number 12-2017, supporting...
Should we ask the citizen?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I'm just trying to rush. So now is the time for any unscheduled citizens' comments. If anyone is here this evening that would like to come forward and address council, we welcome your comments. Please keep in mind, we cannot make any formal action on a comment, but if one needs to be, we'll definitely schedule you for the next meeting, so... All right. Moving on to resolutions. We have Resolution Number 12-2017, a resolution supporting the reauthorization by the General Assembly of the Colorado Lottery Division in 2018. So, we all like GoCo funds. Which is a council?
I move to approve Resolution Number 12-2017.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Councillor Schrader?
Aye.
Councillor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councillor Martinez?
Aye.
Councillor Schlebach?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Next item on our agenda is Resolution Number 12-2017, which allows the city manager to execute the contract with Oakleaf Solar. For those of you who saw the journal last week, we had had a proposal by a solar garden company to, oh, sorry, that was Excel. So, this solar project will actually allow citizens to, of low economic status, to get assistance with utility billing. Is that the wrong one?
You need to flip them, Madam Mayor, so...
Oh, okay. So I was right.
So you were right.
Okay. Go with your gut.
So this is the one where we get a bill credit for tying into this Oakleaf Solar project.
All right.
And you were right on it.
We have two solar projects going, so, one that allows residents to buy in and one that gives the city credit. So this is the contract that would allow the city to receive credits on the solar farm. Which is a council?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 13-217, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Oakleaf Solar.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Councillor Martinez?
Aye.
Councillor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councillor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councillor Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries, four and one?
Thank you. Moving on to ordinances, we have ordinance number 881. It is our franchise renewal with Charter Communications. Which is a council?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 881, granting a franchise renewal to Charter Communications Incorporated.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Councillor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councillor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councillor Martinez?
Aye.
Councillor Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. City manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Outside of the things that were already in my report, and thank you for the Downtown Institute, Azrael's been doing some work with DCI over the last eight or nine months and giving some training from them, and I think that'll actually be a good thing and it kind of follows some of our strategic plan goals, so appreciate that. Kind of interestingly, from the council packet this week, we had a management team meeting today, and we discussed with Nita and Heather, creating a little bit of additional forms for the council packet, so wanting to get on the council packet, but if you have an ask, then there's a financial information form that you fill out as well. So what's the ask for? What's the, you know, is it a single one or a repeating one? How much does the project cost? How much you ask the council for? Because honestly, when I saw the packet, I was like, well, I don't know how much that costs, and it was the same questions you all brought up. So I think we'll work that in there. The only other thing I wanted to add is that, you know, we did have coffee with a cop this week, and we had a number of citizens come by. It was pretty neat. This one was tied into a national effort, but the chief plans on continuing to do that every month, the first Wednesday. It was, it was kind of fun. I went to it, and, you know, just to hear what the citizens had to say, and we had, and Wednesday happens to be shift overlap day for the PDE, so before their calls kind of started, we actually had a number of officers there, and then they all got busy doing other stuff. But it was a good interaction with the public and, you know, had a fair attendance for a first one, so looking forward to seeing that continuing. I think that is about all I've got. Unless you have any questions? Just, I don't know if it's exactly a question or an observation, but along with that funding sheet that you were talking about, is there a way that we could maybe put an emphasis on putting together, doesn't need to be anything elaborate, maybe just a short explanation of what exactly it is that they're trying to do and maybe present that? I'm all for, you know, working and helping out, making sure that, you know, Montevista stays nice and that we can continue building, but I also do believe that we have to be responsible with how we, how we do that, and I like to get information as much as possible. I think that that's perfectly reasonable, we could add it in there. One thing, I'm sorry, I did kind of, just went by. In your packets, I gave you information on a proposed land donation. You all saw where that's located on the map. You know, I did mention it to Rob, and between the two of us, we couldn't come up with a particular reason why the city would want that property, but certainly it's been offered to the city and you as a council if you'd like to accept it. Staff will certainly support that. I mean, we just, based on the location and the shape of the parcel and stuff, it's really not a usable parcel. It's probably not something that we could market readily, and we don't have a storage need or anything in that area for snow that we could identify, so... She's a very nice lady. I enjoyed talking to her, but I thought we'd leave it up to your discretion if we want to accept it.
They didn't know what to do with it either.
No, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Is it something we could develop with URA, with that property, or is it still a little...
It's, it's basically triangular shaped and it's too small for setback-wise. I don't, yeah, we thought about that, and like, well, what could you really fit on there?
It's kind of just down the street from where the community garden was located this year. I mean, you might want to visit with Jim, and I think Rain is here, and I know she was involved in that, but I don't know how long a homeowner is going to be willing to maybe donate their own personal garden, and if maybe you had a permanent home or location that was designated just for community gardening. I don't mean to throw you on the spot, and I don't intend for you to speak for everybody, but just an idea.
Well, I do know Wanda Homan is probably, she's out of town right now, but I do know that she is willing to donate the property again for another year. And I do believe that Jim Poston is interested in carrying that project forward next year and in the years to come. Doesn't mean that we couldn't have two locations, I guess, but, yeah, I think that having a permanent home for something like that, where is the property located?
So, you know, like Huggsley and like Bisonik, the Marsh Park, has got those kind of two narrow streets that just...
Okay.
And then if you keep taking that street north, it kind of turns into a dirt road, and it kind of yields into, so we're talking about that parcel right there. So we're talking about that parcel right there that...
So this is one right here. So you see the ditch turns right there. So it's kind of a little triangle.
What's the availability of water?
Well, that's an interesting question.
It's right next to it.
Well, we're honestly not married, we do have ditch right there.
Well, it is.
So it's not impossible to...
It's all siphoned away.
Well, I do know that's a project, the community garden would like to move forward again next year, and I think that they've been putting back seeds and lots of supplies and preparing so that it can be bigger and better next year. So, but Jim Poston would certainly be the one to talk about too, about that.
Can we...
Just an idea.
Can we table it and talk about it?
Sure.
Talk about that, and if they're interested in it, then.
Yeah. We'll do that. All righty, thank you.
Thank you. Kids Connection Report.
My apologies for not having a report for you this meeting. I'm feeling under the weather and trying to make it through the rest of this evening. Kids Connections been pretty steady. We're hitting 65, 70 kids each day after school. Fridays have picked up drastically from the way they were this summer. Our numbers on Fridays were much lower this summer, we had like 47 this last Friday. I think we're going to keep pretty steady and maybe be pushing over 50 on Fridays, which is really nice because it helps pass the time. Other than that, we have our poker tournament coming up at the end of October. We just started our social media campaign on Facebook. So you might have seen the Facebook post regarding how the tournament, or a little bit of information about the tournament. We don't have the full details, but we have a pretty good amount of people interested in it. Some people that have already made their donation to reserve their seat for the tournament. So it looks like it's gonna, we're gonna pull it off. We've already purchased four of the tables that we were looking at purchasing for the event, and those are supposed to be in tomorrow. We've secured a little over $2,000 in sponsorship funds from local businesses. So everyone was really excited. They kept telling me, I, we heard about a poker tournament that used to happen, it just doesn't happen anymore. We finally, I think we finally found our fundraiser that nobody else does. So it makes it very unique for Kids Connection. So we're really anxious and excited to push through and get that going. Really, we're just pushing through with the after-school program. We did hire one additional staff member, her name is Brazita Medina. And she would have been here tonight, but all of us at Kids Connection are battling this terrible cold that's going around. So when she was done with kids over there, I told her just to go ahead and go home. Hopefully, we can get her over here maybe for the next council meeting so that you guys can meet her. And we did a second round of interviews today to hopefully hire the second position that we were hiring for. So if everything works out, we will have an additional staff member then as well to come present to you. Really, other than that, we're just trying to make it through the really strange season that we're having and not get rained on every day after school. After school, today was amazing though, we had sun. So it wasn't too terrible. Yesterday, we got completely poured on, made it back to the club soaking wet. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them for you now.
Have you set a date for the tournament?
Yes, October 28th. Yeah, we're, I think, the last conversation I had with Alex, we were kind of waiting to see what the media campaign kind of came up with in the first couple of weeks. That way we know realistically how late we can start the tournament. If we do get the 50 players that we're hoping for, it's very possible that it could take two days. So we'd want to start it early enough, so if it did run over in two really late hours, that we could just pick up on Sunday afternoon or something. So we don't have a definite start time yet, but we will be kind of looking at that in the next week and get that completely ironed out so that everyone is aware. And I guess for any audience members who are here that are curious about it, Kids Connection along with three guys' farms are putting on a fundraising poker tournament. So for a $50 buy-in to the tournament, you get a seat at one of the tables and get to play poker until everyone runs out of their amount of money, since it's a fundraiser. But the last, I think it's like the last five that are left at a table will get entered in for some really cool raffle prizes that we've had donated. NAPA Auto Parts is donating some tool sets. We've had some, a lot of them are monetary donations at this point, and we're still working on additional raffle prizes. But there will be some prizes to be won, and hoping that the deal I'm working on, T-shirts, you'll get a T-shirt to take home with you that comes with registration. So if you would like any more information about it, you can get ahold of me at Kids Connection. You can call the city, they can give you contact info, or even pick up my card at the front desk, and I'd be willing to discuss more details with you guys. And as soon as we come up with that details, I will make sure I get those out to everybody.
I know it's also an event on Facebook, I just...
Yes.
For some reason, I'm not able to get into the internet, but I was going to give the exact name, so those of you that do Facebook, you can find it on an event on Facebook as well. Thank you, Nita. Recreation Report.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Gurtado, they, they have a sick employee today, so he's refereeing right now.
Oh, I was gonna say, I thought he was here.
Yeah, he was sitting back.
Are we still here?
Oh, so he's...
Yeah, so we had to go get set up, sorry. So if you have any questions for the report, let me know and...
Or behind me, okay.
Does Nita have something?
I don't have anything at this time.
Have you started planning for candidate's night?
Yes, I actually met with the chamber, and the chamber is actually going to host that. I'm going to assist them. I sent out an email to all the candidates, asking them for a proposed date. The chamber is looking at October 16th or that following Monday. I've only had two responses back, so I'm just waiting for the rest of the candidates to respond. And once I get that, then I will get with Linda at the chamber, and we will put that into motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Last week, I attended the Board of Health in Del Norte. We spent a fair amount of time pondering whether or not to grant a variance to a resident of Masonic Park. Evidently, all of their sewer systems, et cetera, were built in 1913. And so now, when something gives, somebody has to go in and hire an engineer, and so on and so forth, and totally redo things, and obviously, things cost a lot more now than they did then, and... But the end result was, we granted him a variance after a discussion about maybe clusters of people could sign up or join, you know, in clusters rather than having to do a whole new system, the full length of the property. So hopefully, that will come about at some point in time. Depends on how much residents use their systems and so on, but it goes back to 1913. So anyway, and then last week, I went to the CML Dinner in La Jara, and I thought it was very well presented, and certainly, we had a terrific meal, and it was sort of a big surprise. I mean, when you drive down the street, Mel's Diner doesn't look like anything really exciting. But once you get in the door, everything was nicely decorated, nicely done, and they served a wonderful buffet. The roast beef was the best, so. And then I had a phone call the other day about the date for Veterans Parade, which has been set for November 10th, with the parade and the event up at the Veterans Memorial Park, with more details to come.
There's actually a meeting, if anyone's interested in... We're having a Veterans Parade meeting on Tuesday at 5:30 at the Information Center. So if anybody would like to get involved and help with that event, or learn more about it, or how you can be involved with the actual Veterans Park, you're more than welcome to attend. Do you need to know?
It's okay, I was done. Thank you.
So on Facebook for the poker series, it's Kids Connection Annual Poker Series for Charity. So they have the event posted up. Just lucky, I guess. So, yeah, if you guys want to go over there, and then also, they have the spot where you can donate, and get your tickets available for the event too, so. And then I will be making an event for the bonfire for October 20, or, yeah, 26th, right? Yep. So we're hoping to get the whole community out like we did last year, it's a really good showing, and we want to keep up that tradition and keep it going every year. And I think it's beneficial for not only the students to see the support that the community gives, but also the community can get out there and support the high school and the local sports teams, and really kind of send them off for the homecoming game, so. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I don't have a lot, I'd just like to say thanks to all the businesses who did donate to the Kids Connection Annual Poker Series. I thought that was pretty awesome to hear how much money was donated there, so, thank you.
Thank you. So now that you're talking about events, it did remind me that we also have Holiday Festival meeting coming up this coming Wednesday.
The 18th.
Oh, no, sorry, yeah, you're right. Next Wednesday, the 18th, at noon, we'll be meeting at Mountain View. So again, if anybody would like to be on that committee, we'd love to have you. And any new ideas? I did visit with the new chamber manager today, and he will be attending that meeting, and he is very excited to get on board and help with that. So that, of course, the Holiday Festival is always the first weekend in December. So the Parade of Lights will be on Saturday, December 2nd, 6 o'clock. I was hoping student council would still be here, so we can... It's all, it's been nice the last couple of years to have all the high school clubs doing floats and entries, and it's been a huge addition, as well as the band, so hopefully that will continue. And I went with Carol to the CML Conference, and that was very nice, got lots of good information, so. If there's nothing else to come before council this evening, we will be in recess until our workshop on the 17th at 6:00 PM.